Let's resume the meeting. This session is security and may I welcome the Secretary for Security and his team to our meeting. So over to you, Secretary, would you please give us a briefing? Thank you, Chairman. In the draft estimates for the new financial year, the two policy areas will account for forty-six point two billion dollars representing eight point three percent of the total government expenditure. Enhancing Hong Kong's counterterrorism capability and preparedness, starting from twenty eighteen, nineteen, the government will provide an additional allocation amounting to a full year provision of two hundred and sixty-five million dollars for enhancing Hong Kong's counterterrorism capability and preparedness, which includes setting up an interdepartmental counterterrorism unit, ICTU, and strengthening respective departments' efforts in this aspect. The Security Bureau will establish the ICTU on the twenty-third of April. It will comprise forty-three offices from the six discipline services under the Security Bureau, providing an interdepartmental counterterrorism platform on top of the existing counterterrorism framework. ICTU will be dedicated to monitoring the global terrorism trend and counterterrorism measures, strengthening intelligence gathering and exchange, reviewing and improving counterterrorism strategies in Hong Kong, developing specialized training on counterterrorism, optimizing various response plans, et cetera. Effective counterterrorism efforts require a comprehensive counterterrorism enforcement network webbed by different posts, which do not only involve specialized teams but also cover multifaceted law enforcement of the discipline services. To this end, more than four hundred head councils will be created in various discipline services to strengthen the work on counterterrorism and multifaceted law enforcement capabilities, including strengthening manpower of the special duties unit, increasing the capability on intelligence gathering on counterterrorism, terrorist financing and money laundering, setting up a response team under the Police Railway District, strengthening the monitoring guarding of suspected persons at control points, enhancing the gatekeeping of air freight and postal articles by monitoring and intercepting items such as weapons, reinforcing public education on self-rescue and self-protection in emergency and unexpected situations, including terrorist attacks and major disasters, increasing the capability of supporting drills and training law and order. The main operational targets of the Hong Kong Police Force for twenty eighteen are to combat violent crimes, riots, syndicated and organized crimes, dangerous drugs and quick crash crimes, to combat cybersecurity and combat technology crimes, and to ensure public safety and step up counterterrorism work. A total of one thousand and fifty-seven additional posts will be created in the Hong Kong Police Force in twenty eighteen and nineteen. These new posts are for strengthening Hong Kong's counterterrorism capability and preparedness, enhancing the capability of emergency response and handling major incidents, providing manpower support to projects such as the Hong Kong Chihai Macau Bridge, Guangzhou Shenzhen-Hong Kong Express Railway West Carrefour Terminal, Lian Tang Hang Yuen Yip B C P, et cetera. Control points. Three new control points are expected to come into operation in twenty eighteen, nineteen, namely the X R L, Hong Kong Chihai Macau Bridge, and Lian Tang Hang Yuen Yip B C P. To this end, new posts, including one thousand and fifty-eight posts in Immigration Department, nine hundred and seventy-six posts in Customs and Exiles Department, three hundred and three posts in Hong Kong Police Force, and thirty-nine posts in Fire Services will be created. Handling non-refundment claims. Since the commencement of the comprehensive review of the strategy of handling non-refundment claims in early twenty sixteen, various measures have yielded some results. Last year, the number of non-ethnic Chinese illegal immigrants found dropped by eighty-five percent over the peak. The number of non-refundment claims also dropped by sixty-three percent as compared to the peak. At present, the number of claims pending Immigration Department's screening has dropped to about four thousand three hundred from the peak of over eleven thousand. The government will continue with various measures and will ensure that sufficient resources are available to handle these claims promptly and to speed up the removal of the rejected claimants from Hong Kong. Separately, we are actively studying the amendment of the immigration ordinance, such as specifying the screening procedures, tightening timeframes, prohibiting delay tactics, and strengthening Immigration Department's detection power. Our target is to introduce the amendment bill into the Legislative Council in the next legislative year. Territory-wide identity card replacement exercise. The Immigration Department will launch the territory-wide ID card replacement exercise from the end of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. Immigration Department will recruit nine hundred and sixty-six additional staff members, including three hundred and fifty-three time-limited civil service posts and six hundred and three contract staff members for the project, involving an expenditure of two hundred and fifty million dollars in twenty eighteen, nineteen. Fire and ambulance services. The F S D will increase three hundred and eighty-three posts in the new financial year, including staff for the fire control ambulance streams, as well as civilian and technical staff. The scope of duties include stepping up public education to raise the public's resilience in case of emergencies, providing fire and ambulance services at the new boundary control points, operating ambulance shifts, conducting inspections and acceptance tests of fire service installations and equipment, and improving building plans for major infrastructure projects. In addition, the government will, in collaboration with the Urban Renewal Authority, U R A, devote two billion dollars to launch the Fire Safety Improvement Works subsidy scheme for subsidizing owners of old composite buildings to comply with the requirements under the Fire Safety Services Buildings Department ordinance as soon as possible. The amount of subsidy can be up to a maximum of sixty percent of the cost of the fire safety improvement works and consultancy fees. The scheme will be rolled out in the middle of twenty eighteen. The U R A, together with F S D and Buildings Department, has held ten briefing sessions to encourage owners to start preparation as soon as possible. The C S D will continue to improve aging correctional facilities, including installation of electric lock systems in Stanley Prison and Thailand Centre for Women, and replacing and enhancing the C C T V in seven correctional facilities, including Stanley Prison and Pickle Prison. The C S D will continue to provide diversified vocational training to persons in custody, having regard to the overall situation and demand of the employment market. For example, new courses on timber flooring and interior renovation, computer-aided renovated drawings will be introduced. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer members' questions relating to the policy area of security. Questions from members, five minutes each, starting with Mr. Jeremy Tam. Thank you, Chairman. My question is on zero four four, about non-refundment claims. In relation to some countries, you have increased your threshold for visa requirements. For example, India, after implementing the pre-re arrival registration requirement, there's been a drop of non-refundment claims. But at the same time, another problem emerges. Indian visitors have dropped substantially in number. In the past, the Hong Kong Tourism Board has indicated their wish to develop this market, but last year, the visitor figure dropped to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, down by twenty percent. That means forty to forty, fifty thousand fewer visitors coming from India. Well, for Southeast Asian visitors, the per capita spending in Hong Kong stands at about five thousand. So that means the revenue foregone is about two hundred million dollars per year. Of course, we need to tackle bogus refugees. And yet, after introducing the new measure, Indian visitors coming to Hong Kong have dropped quite significantly, and it's really having a negative impact on our tourism industry. I think it's time you review the arrival requirements for Indian nationals. Is it because it is too cumbersome? Because these are two different concepts. Let's say if you have a high threshold, you need to have, say, employment letter, proof of income, you need to prove your identity in order to tackle bogus refugees. Well, that's one thing, but if the procedure is too cumbersome, that's something else. You need to review it. And you should also bear in mind that Belt and Road Initiative is a really hot topic, but India is not included. Well, you talked about nationals of Pakistan, Bangladesh, Nepal, Sri Lanka, et cetera. These are Belt and Road countries. So in that case, are you suggesting that they should not come if you impose such a harsh visa requirement on these countries, Secretary? Responding to Mr. Tam's point, I hope, first of all, Mr. Tam would understand that this is a registration requirement. After we implemented the pre-re arrival online registration scheme, the number of visitors overstaying in Hong Kong dropped by ninety percent. For those who gained entry lawfully but then overstayed in Hong Kong unlawfully, and the number of refundment claims stemming from it have also dropped substantially. So that's the first point. I can say the registration requirement is very effective, because it is fact that the number of cases has dropped significantly. Sorry, I don't have time, I need to interject. I'm saying that you're going overboard. You should just scrap all the flights from India. Please allow me to finish my answer. The second point is this. Well, for those rejected at the registration level, they can still come on the strength of a visa. Point number three, drop in arrival figures. Well, that is not because of a single factor. For example, for the Chamber of Commerce of India, we also discussed with them on how we can make it more convenient for them as far as the procedure is concerned. As for the arrival procedure, for example, we have an email for inquiries. And as far as the form is concerned, you can print out the form and verify the information. At the V C P, a Q R code is provided on the form so that the airliners can expeditiously check the particulars on their visas, and will continue to explain the situation to the stakeholders and the Chambers of Commerce of India. We welcome comments and suggestions, but I need to reiterate that for genuine non-refundment claimants, of course, we'll take up their cases and process the cases, but less than one percent of these cases are substantiated at the moment, whilst the remaining bogus refugees are illegal workers in Hong Kong. That is why we need to speed up the procedure, to screen out those who shouldn't come here in the first place, so that we can help those genuinely in need. I think Mr. Tam would agree. Yes, you should make sure that you would not affect the innocent, because you need to, otherwise it will undermine the economy. I want to remind members that we have a two-hour session today. There are nine members on the list at the moment. You can wait for a second, third round. Mr. H. Chen, S B zero six six, about honorarium and special rewards and services. Well, it has increased substantially by sixty percent, but I'd like to ask a question, and it's a matter of principle. I'd like to have some figures from the Security Bureau. It is the most difficult task to ask the Security Bureau for some spending figures. Usually, they would say that they do not keep such statistics, or they would say something like this. The provision under subheads, rewards, and special services involves the police's operations of confidential nature, and revealing that may, may help criminals understand the police's situation and jeopardizing public interest. Well, in fact, when we ask for figures, for example, how many police officers are patrolling the street tonight, and how many of them are equipped with, are armed? Well, you may call that this is confidential nature. As for expenditure under the subheads, they won't even answer that. So Chairman, you should make a ruling whether it is fair. So take this as an example, rewards and special services. What does it include? And it's really mysterious. Well, sometimes, according to the media, the subhead will include expenditure for informants or money, materials, and supplies procured in relation to demonstrations and processions, overtime allowance received by police officers in handling demonstrations, et cetera.
Well, under rewards and special services, are those things that I mentioned covered? If you tell us the amount of money paid to informants, how would it allow the criminals to elude justice or jeopardize public interest? So what about other things, materials and supplies procured in relation to demonstration and processions, and overtime allowance? You should be able to tell us something about those, right? The increase in sixty percent is incurred on the fight against terrorist activities and other things. So how do you spend the provision here? And in your speech, in the opening remarks, a one thousand and five fifty-seven posts will be added to the head count to handle anti-terrorism, then the West X R L, then the Hong Kong Chihai Macau Bridge. Are you saying that this is a highly vulnerable locations? What are the measures they are going to take to counterterrorism on those locations? Understand, Mr. Chen and other members would like to monitor the government and the police in how we spend the funding allocations. You have a duty to do so, but I believe Hong Kong people, that the government or the law enforcement agencies encompassing crime, especially in relation to the capacity to counterterrorism, we should ensure the integrity of our work. You may not be paying particular attention to police work and other security-related duties, but I can tell you that in some security-related seminars, let's say, drugs, when we discuss the report on surveillance and covert interception of communication, when we discuss in such an open forum on the special and confidential means to tackle such crimes, syndicated criminal organizations would monitor the whole process. Members will not do so. You'll not monitor the whole process, try to identify loopholes in order to elude justice. You may not do that, but as the Security Bureau, as the head of L E As, I have to ensure that it's not going to happen. I hope Mr. Chen will know that whatever we do, we will make sure that our capability will not be undermined. Well, I've given him two, three minutes to respond, but they have not answering anything about rewards and special services. So, Miss Cordia Mo, one seven four and oh three seven. That is the importation of talent, the, for example, graduates will be allowed to stay behind after graduations, and also the quality migrant admission scheme. The successful candidates are mainly from the mainland, some eighty-five percent accountable, accounted for by mainland candidates in the past three years, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, May, February, some twenty thousand immigrants are imported this way, and coupled with the one hundred and fifty new arrivals every day. We are talking about seventy-five thousand emitted into Hong Kong from the mainland. New arrivals from the mainland will account for seventy-five thousand. I don't know whether our resources can cope. You should at least look at the quotas for quality migrant admission scheme. Eighty-five percent of, should you give eighty-five percent of the quotas to mainland applicants for famine reunion cases, well, it's not going to be created by anyone, it's human right. But there are other people emitted on the strength of a bogus marriage or fake document. If I ask you to take back the power to vet immigrants, you won't answer me. As Mrs. Carrie Lam, there's no reason or justification to change the current system of one-way permit system. And it said that on the system of one-way permit, you are going to exchange views with the C P G. You are not actually answering my question here. You exchange views. Who would represent the Hong Kong side, and when would that take place, and where? Are our representatives lower in rank, and they are just like talking to their boss? And there's no working group to discuss a one-way permit system? Two questions. Thank you, Secretary. The schemes referred to by Miss Mo would have to be viewed in certain way, though I have to rectify some of the observations. The Q M A S is not limited to mainland applicants. I know, but why is it that eighty-five percent of them are from the mainland? Well, the Q M A S is about attracting talent from all over the world. We have been promoting this in other, in overseas countries, so that more would know that they can apply. And on the scoring system, we target the famous educational institutions in other countries, and we would give them the scores as a matter of priority. So we cover many famous universities in other countries, so that would address the first point made by Miss Mo, on the admission scheme for talent and mainland talents and professionals. We have the general employment policy, and that is for mainland talents, they can be And the number of talents admitted are four times those admitted by, from the mainland. When they are here to work, they would have contracts lasting for three or four years. But now we're talking about an immigration scheme, quality migrant admission scheme. You're mixing things up. We have a number of measures. For example, for quality migrant admission scheme, we have admitted a world-class pianist, second to none, and also the top scientist, and we have also got admission scheme for mainland talents and professionals. As for other talents from other places, we have a general employment policy. I know, but whatever scheme you're talking about, you are mainly admitting the mainlanders. I was, I was saying that it was four to one ratio, four for those admitted from other places, visa fee one from the mainland, but those are not here for migration purposes. Mr. Wilson Orr, nine four eight, one nine four eight. And there's those on record as are found to have committed more crimes. A member said that we should not target the wrong people, but I would say that we'd have to handle bogus refugees clearly. One thousand five hundred and forty-two of them have found to have committed crimes, and I quoting this from the Oriental Daily. And on a daily basis, people are very much alarmed. Please, higher, raise it a bit. I hope the Secretary would know that whatever you're doing, you have the, you have been, you are appreciated by the police, by the general public, and they are telling you to do more. So I have to tell the Secretary that your work is recognized and appreciated. He said that you are going to look into the amendments for, of the immigration ordinance. I don't know when you are going to do that, maybe next legislative session, we'll see something done. And also, can you step up your efforts to tackle, to combat problems arising from these bogus refugees? And can you tell us more? Second, you have also the so-called non-refundment claims. You have repatriated two thousand five hundred last year. This, and the figures tells, tell us a rising trend, an improving trend. Many of these are not actually the victims. We would like to set up some reception centers in order to ensure the peace and harmony in the community, but the Bureau is moving at snail's pace on this issue. Secretary, please tell the public whether you are going to actively look into the setting up of a reception center in Hong Kong for these claimants. Secretary, let me say something about the reception center idea first. Under the existing laws, and according to a court's judgment, when we detain a non-refundment claimant, it can only be for a reasonable period of time. What is a reasonable, reasonable period of time? That depends on the actual circumstances. At present, we have to handle quite a substantial number of non-refundment claims, and many of them have resorted to delaying tactics. So how long should they be detained, so that the case, the cases can be processed and then a repatriation can follow? We have to overcome many factors, many constraints, to comply with this court's ruling that this can only last for a reasonable period of time. We are going to look into the laws to see whether we can give more detention power to the Director of Immigration, and secondly, we have to make sure that whatever detention is made, it will be only for a reasonable period of time as directed by the court. We have heard the suggestion, we are looking into the legal issues, and also, we hope that by handling the backlog of cases, and when we handle new, new cases, we are more confident about the processing time, so that we can better comply with the court's ruling that this is only done, or the detention is only done for a reasonable period of time. So that's for the question of reception center. As for the crimes and offenses committed by the non-refundment claimants, in twenty seventeen, fifteen hundred of them belong to this category of offenders. The police has been handling this through different means. For example, the O C T B has a dedicated team on such cases, especially the, they will be collecting intelligence, and district commanders would also deploy the officers to do more the inspection and checks. So we would step up our efforts to combat illegal immigration, and we have done quite a good job. On a monthly basis, the number of illegal immigrants On a monthly basis, the number of illegal immigrants fund has reduced by seventy to eighty percent over what it was four years ago.
So we'd like to thank the Public Security of the CPG for their efforts. Because we have been collaborating with four provinces. And the Public Security Bureau of the mainland China is also going to launch another three-year plan in twenty nineteen. And in a large-scale operation, we're able to arrest several hundred persons. And you can imagine, if these hundred persons could come to Hong Kong, there would be a heightened risk in Hong Kong. My turn, I'd like to ask about bogus refugees, since everyone is asking bogus refugees. Now, you suggest that about non-refundment claimants, you will consider within this legislative year tightening the timeframe for Australia and New Zealand. The, once, once arrested, the person can, will be dealt with twenty-four hours. Will you consider shortening the timeframe? We'll look into that, we'll also draw reference from other jurisdictions, and we'll also consider how much time on average is needed for handling a case. You can't give us a tip, a tip off at the moment? Well, I can only say that in terms of efficiency in dealing with a case, we have make much improvement. Well, the time needed has dropped from twenty-five weeks to ten weeks on average for handling a case without deliberate delay tactics. So you're going to look into the timetable, but you're still looking into it, is it right? We will consider it in a comprehensive manner, I hope that it can be reduced to two weeks. Now, I'd like to come to my, the crux of my question, SB one three six about the use of CCTV in law enforcement in Hong Kong, because we have a lot of breaches of the law in Hong Kong happening in the moment. And for ninety-nine percent of the case detected, most of them made use of CCTVs. Now, about the use of CCTVs or cameras in illegal parking, I asked the Transport Department. And they said that it's not under their purview, and I should ask you to take up the matter of illegal parking. Well, let me just talk about this. We have travel congestion, traffic congestion, and also illegal parking. And this is a yellow box junction, and you can see that at all times, a vehicle would be on the yellow box junction. And for the mainland at the junctions, you can see that cameras have been installed. And any vehicle staying in the yellow box junction will be booked immediately. Well, another point about bus base or bus stops. Well, a car is illegally parked here, and therefore, the bus cannot park properly at the stop. For low-floor buses, you need to make use of the curb as well. So for the wheelchair bound, somebody would need to carry the wheelchair onto the carriageway. And then there is a gap preventing the wheelchair users from getting on the bus. So there are so many problems arising from illegal parking. And in short, you should look into the use of CCTV in law enforcement. And I would like you to resolve the problem regarding busy yellow box junctions and also bus stops, because smoother traffic flow will greatly help Hong Kong. But the problem has remained for so many years. So secretary, you should try to, try to answer my question. Well, I asked the Police Commissioner. Well, he said that as long as it's expressly indicated, provided in the disclaimer that there was CCTV in the vicinity, it is not a breach of the Police Law. And that, there is a saying that if you're in the street, you should expect to be seen. Your response, secretary, from the point of view of security and law enforcement, I am in strong support of using technology in law enforcement. And the use of technology can also offer objective evidence. Another point, you can boost the morale of the police force. Well, then the number of cases will increase as we crack down on these cases, and this will help improve traffic and security. So Chairman, I will actively reflect your suggestions to the Transport Department. And I also agree that this will be in line with the Police Law. Right, but I asked them, they said that the matter should be referred to you, and you now say the same. Who should be in charge? As far as the road traffic ordinance is concerned, it is the Transport and Housing Bureau which should be in charge. But about installing CCTV, they say that you should be in charge. Is that true? Well, I will discuss with them, but we are in the same government. So you're just passing the buck between departments. Well, Mr. Tian, as I said at the beginning, I support the use of technology. Thank you. Dr. Chen Shong-tai, thank you, Chairman. About zero nine seven, it is a very simple question about the use of social media such as Facebook, Instagram, or YouTube in the publicity effort and public education or image building. And in your reply, you mentioned that regarding the social media platforms of the police force, it is the Social Media Communication Division, which is in charge, comprising establishment of thirty officers, including twenty-eight police officers and two contract staff members. It seems to be quite a large establishment. Because for the Chief Executive's Office, they also have a social media platform using Facebook and Instagram. But they only have one civil servant in charge of the social media platforms, whereas for the police, you have thirty. So my question is this, regarding the number of officers, do you have any details of the spending that's in relation to Social Media Communication Division of the Hong Kong Police Force? What's the expenditure?
Well, thank you for your question. I will first give you our view from the bureau's point of view, and then I'll defer to the police to take your question. Regarding the Hong Kong Police Force's work, we provide very different service comparing to the C E's office. We are very much in touch with the people in different aspects, including crime prevention, protection, or ensuring personal safety, protecting oneself. And I believe that we cannot really compare the two units. As regarding the operational resources, I'll defer the question to the police, yes, Police Commissioner. Well, first of all, Dr. Chen, I need to clarify that the social media platforms of the police force are not simply for the image-building work of the police force. It is actually a channel for communicating with the public. And as mentioned by the secretary, in terms of crime prevention and combating crimes, we disseminate information. Sometimes, the public may not understand the new policy or new measures introduced by the police, and we do make use of the platform. And we also introduce to the public about the work of, say, the police dogs unit and also the rescue teams, so that we can interact with the public, so that the, so that the public would better understand our work, so as to gain trust and confidence from the public. As for the spending involved, we have one superintendent, one chief, two chief inspector, four inspector or senior inspector, one station sergeant, eight sergeants, twelve police constable or senior police constables, one contract new media writer, and one contract new media designer. Their salaries would entail the work on a daily basis. Regarding spending on, say, stationary or other resources, they are included in the budget, and we do not have breakdown for these things I mentioned. Chairman, I think they do need to provide a breakdown for our scrutiny. Because production may be involved, or you may need to pay for the use of media. So it's not like a budget for P P R B, Public Police Public Relations Branch. We cannot just have a lump sum figure. Because you could be reducing the budget for the Police Public Relations Branch as a whole, especially on the face-to-face public education initiatives such as schools, school talks. And you have thirty members managing the social media platforms. So that's a really big team of Facebook users. And I do use your platform, and I have watched your clips about, say, the police dog unit. Definitely, there should be a breakdown of the budget for that. I hope that the police can provide the, the breakdown. Any response? Well, in fact, the reply clearly mentions that apart from managing the social media platforms and related administrative duties, the division also supports the work of other formations. So if the officer is tasked only to take up one task, then it is not cost-effective. We should allow the division to support different divisions. So, because that is not a good way of, not optimal use of resources.
Mr. Shikachan, my question is on two four oh, SB two four oh, about the use of technology within the Correctional Services Department. Unfortunately, in the reply, it only places emphasis on the use of computers. But use of technology is far broader than the use of computers. And recently, an inmate committed suicide in a jail. So will you consider using technology to, say, ask inmates to wear life bands, wristbands, so that if there is anything wrong, the control room can then go there immediately to find out what happens? And also use some non-sharing bed sheets? And this also involves the use of technology. I want to know whether the bureau will consider using technology in improving the C S D facilities. The other question is on SB zero four one about the B drugs fund. And according to your reply, the B drugs fund entails a lot of websites and for a lot of research. But these research studies all involving sums more than one million dollars, but we have yet to see any reports. When will they be available? In twenty fifteen, the Audit Commission published a report stating that the B drugs fund had a balance of four-point-three billion dollars with eighty million dollars a year. But in twenty fourteen, there were only thirty-one projects, twenty fifteen, thirty-eight projects, and twenty sixteen, only fifty-four projects. So few projects, is it because you received very few applications? Or is it because the application procedures are very cumbersome? Because I understand from organizations that you need independent audited report, you need also independent bank accounts as well. There was a lack of trust, and they are deterred from applying for the fund. And as for the Action Plan twenty fifteen eighteen of the B D F, you have a lot of day camp, microfilm competition, et cetera. I want to know whether you have performance indicators. Say, after going to a concert, how many users, how many participants will be deterred from taking drugs? And targeting drug users, the services provided only accounted for seventeen percent. And whereas for public education, twenty-six percent. Of course, I agree that prevention and public education is necessary. But in terms of removing the stigmatization on drug abuses, you don't seem to strike a good balance. I want to know whether you have a timetable or a plan to review this B D F, which sits on a large reserves with very vague policy objective.
There are quite a few questions I need to, some time to organize my replies. I'll say something about the use of technology and then ask the Commissioner of Correctional Services and the Commissioner and Director of Audits. As I've said, if we can use technology in any aspect of law enforcement, we should consider doing it, doing more. Because it's more efficient, it's more, it would give us objective evidence and data. So I share the Commissioner of Correctional Services position. And that is, we are more than willing to consider the proposals on the adoption of technology to help with our work. Commissioner, we have been trying to integrate our computer system by adopting some core computer systems in our management. So there will be better integration of computers. As for whether in our day-to-day work, we can use technology to detect what's happening with inmates and what's happening during the night, and whether our officers can get some help in their, in their work through adoption of technology. We have been conducting some studies, so we have been looking at overseas experience, and we have involved other departments to help us. And then when necessary, when, when appropriate, we'll adopt such a solution, solution platforms. Mr. James To. I originally wanted to ask questions about hardcore crimes, but I hope the Commissioner can say something about the the use of civilian cars as roadblocks. In, you are conducting a review, then you will come up with, with a decision, and you tell us what you are going to do in due course. But I think public trust on police has dropped because of the recent incident. If your colleagues ask vehicles on the road to stop or to slow down, people may be worried. Especially when the cars are stopped and your colleague was just a few lengths of car away, and people are concerned that some car, some vehicle behind would ram into them. So can we do things in, in another order now that the review has not been completed? Can you announce, make an announcement and tell the public that this is not going to be done at the moment? You will not use civilian cars as a roadblock. And then, until the review is completed, then you may say that under some special circumstances, that may be necessary. And you make a public announcement and explain what you're going to do, and you gain the understanding and confidence of the public. And then you would implement new arrangements whereby, under those circumstances, civilian cars may be asked to act as a roadblock. Can you do this to assure the public so that they are not worried? Commissioner, I thank Mr. To for your suggestions. The Review Committee will be looking into the points that you have raised, that's part of their purview. We actively consider such matters. We have attached a lot of importance to these issues in the light of the recent incidents. We have reminded all our frontline colleagues that in carrying out law enforcement action, they should always regard the personal safety of the public and themselves as the always regard the personal safety of the public and themselves as the first priority. When there is a risk, however minute or insignificant that may be, they would, should discontinue with the action taken, especially when they are trying to intercept speeding vehicles. And in the meantime, we are going to complete the review expeditiously to decide what we are going to do in such operations. I hope the Commissioner can understand the concern. Well, you have reiterated your previous points. To those who understand what you are trying to get at, and I count myself as one, if the officer thinks that there's no going to be no risk after intercepting some vehicles and the intention is to intercept a vehicle behind those which have been stopped, why don't you just say that, just, why don't you be more specific? You just tell your officers that even if there's no risk, don't do it until the review is completed. And then you can, you allow them to do this under those special circumstances. But road conditions change very quickly and there are many different issues to handle. If we say this to our officers, they will have many questions and ask whether we can do this or not. The very, the first important task is to ensure public safety. The officer on the spot should do the assessment. If the assessment tells him that there is some risk, whatever the level of risk, then the action, the action should be stopped. If the officer stops a civilian car and genuinely believes that there's no risk, he can do it, right? In that case, the people, the general public would still be worried, very worried. Chairman, if I may, I understand what Mr. To is trying to achieve. But in other countries, you know that there are terrorists ramming a vehicle into a crowd. So if a speeding vehicle is allowed to, to, to continue to, to run on the road, there can be risks to personal safety. But what we want to do is that we should not create a risk for other low users. But what we are trying to handle on, on the ground is not as simple as this described by Mr. To. I just want you to ensure the public that you would not ask your officers to do that until the review is completed. We want the whole, the entire Hong territory in Hong Kong is safe. And also sometimes the police has to take action to minimize damage. And we have now decided to do something about the action that can be taken. The review has not been completed, but we will involve more people in making the decision. So that the decision can, can be sound and will be something that result from the full consideration of factors. I hope we will not, because of one incident, we would not give up the, the power to take action in some circumstances. For example, if the vehicle is driven by terrorists, we should allow the officers to do something to stop that. Mr. Alokin, Chairman. I want to ask a follow-up question about the question raised by Sun Chi Chin on rewards and allowances. According to a report from Hong Kong O one, we have seen that the expenditure has been arise. And because of more protests and demonstrations, that's why the government, the police have to buy more material. For example, distilled water, high platforms, my barriers, and the purchase of chains used in setting up barriers. Is it, is this report correct? Is the description correct? I won't comment on the details of reports, press reports. Because in those reports, there is a degree of speculation involved. Any details about our operations, be it manpower or the modus operandi or the deployment of resources? If we can make it public, then we'll mention it in the application. Is it a sensitive matter in respect of purchasing distilled water? Well, I didn't say that you are speculating on what my reply means. You can go to different details. I'm talking about the general principles. We have to make sure that we can allow the members to understand how we spend the funds allocated and whether it's done in the public interest. And second, we have to make sure that the disclosure of information would not benefit or would not grant an advantage to criminals and tell them how to evade law enforcement. Yes, over the years, we have asked you many figures, but you are unable to tell us the figures which should have been disclosed. For example, the latest, in the, in the, in the latest run in the last year, rewards. Can you tell us how many rewards were offered in the late, in the, in the latest run of, in the latest financial year? The information we provided is all we can, is all the information we can provide. I was talking about the D S A P S, which will make public during the time Mr. Lee Shu Kwan was, Ambrose Lee was Secretary. That was in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. It's on your website, but there was, there's no update after twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So you are moving backwards. This is retrogressive. Why is it that if you offer us, tell us the information on the number of rewards offers, you would grant an advantage to criminals? We have some, we have, we offer rewards confidentially. Of course, if it's a pub, it's an offer, a sort of bounty reward. Apart from these, we also use different means to gather intelligence. If I tell members on how we gather information in a particular field, then the informants may be exposed. I cannot tell you that because the people in those syndicates would know that they are targeted. We have also asked about special materials and equipment. You have been spending more and more on this. It's S B O six six. I don't know whether saying that is between the eighty million, eighteen fifty million? It was eighty-one in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So I ask you whether it's about buying distilled water. You can use spend it under materials and surprise. Are those materials procured necessary for your work? We can see that there are more and more barriers. For example, along Loh Ha Road, there are more and more barriers that are placed there. Mr. Dr. Fernando Zhang, many establishment members have asked questions about refugees and you have asked some, Chairman, as well. People establishment members have been talking about bogus refugees all the time. This is really not nice to me.
Because you're making use of this concept to include all refugee seekers and you call them bogus refugees, I think this is discrimination. Because there are refugees in the world. Our previous generations in Hong Kong were probably refugees as well. We are affluent nowadays. And if we simply categorize all outsiders as bogus refugees, it will really be discriminating against asylum seekers. And it is also dangerous to link Southeast, South Asians with bogus refugees and criminals. And there are also suggestions that they should be locked up. I think this is backpedaling and regression and discrimination. Now regarding the questions, I'm concerned about a number of areas. One, one area is about inmates' rights and the other is about the disabled. First, I'd like to follow up on zero seven seven about M I P, mentally incapacitated persons being victims of sexual assaults. I'd like to have a breakdown of statistics and breakdown. And according to your reply, the police handled a total of ninety-nine cases. But regarding the place of residence, type of disability, age and gender, et cetera, you say that you do not keep breakdowns, mentioned the question. Ninety-nine cases may not be substantial. For M I Ps, if they are victims of sexual assault, we think it is serious. And we should do our very best to stop these crimes from happening. So it is important to have statistics and analysis regarding these cases. I hope that the Security Bureau can provide us with the information after the meeting. And regarding S B two three eight, Mr. Long Yu Chong asked about the sign language interpreters. From your reply, I can only draw one conclusion, and that is the C S D has never provided any sign language interpretation services for deaf inmates. Now you mentioned in your reply that you do not maintain a breakdown of such cases. You only provided the sign language interpreters on the register of the judiciary. But it's a totally different matter from the services which should be provided by the C S D. So have you, have you not provided sign language interpretation services for deaf persons in custody? At least you should give me a reply on whether, or the yes and no answer. I'll just pursue this question first, Secretary. About refugees and bogus refugees, I want to make it clear that Hong Kong is not a party or a signatory to the convention. We are not a state member, so we, what we are dealing with are non-refund claims in relation to torture and cruel inhuman treatment. Well, I want to make it clear, Secretary, I didn't say bogus refugees. I say the establishment camp is calling them bogus refugees. Now, I want to say that because we are not a signatory to the Convention against torture and other cruel inhuman degrading punishment or treatment. So the, I'd want to say that we're not a state member. So for, we do not have refugees such. So U N Convention on Refugees do not really apply to Hong Kong. We're dealing with non-refund claims. I think the public can have their own judgment on the, on the social, on social matters, but that's fact. And very simply put, let me reply to Dr. Zhang that of course, statistics are important. But it is up to the head of departments to decide what statistics to be kept, which are the most important as far as their work is concerned. Well, we can look into Dr. Zhang's suggestion, but we cannot guarantee that every figure you ask for can be provided because after all, it's about the use of resources. We need to make sure that resources are used in a way that, that would improve efficiency of the department. As for the C S D, I think time is up. I'll wait for the next round. Dr. Priscilla Long. Sorry, speaker is not coming through. Please switch on Dr. Priscilla Long's mic. The mic is not coming through. The speaker is not coming through. The microphone is not on. It's mentioned very clearly that we have torture claimants who have entered Hong Kong illegally. And there is a general perception that they could be abusing our torture claim procedure. And in fact, an Indian friend gave me and showed me an advertisement in India, the advertisement claims to provide one-stop service for those who would like to come to Hong Kong. And they would be guaranteed an income so and so, along with government subsidies, so and so. And this is really a strong incentive for these illegal immigrants to come to Hong Kong to abuse our non-refund claim procedure so that they can remain in Hong Kong and work. Bogus refugee is really a term coined in the community to describe a such situation. I'd like to follow up on some figures. One is in S B zero three four in twenty fifteen. These persons pending screening amounted to ten thousand nineteen, nine hundred and ninety-two. In twenty seventeen, well, because it's been put under public spotlight, the figure has dropped to five thousand eight hundred plus. Now, according to your reply regarding the aid expenditure to help non-refund claimants, in twenty fifteen, the figures stood at four hundred and eighty-nine million. But in twenty seventeen, eighteen, the figure increased to five hundred and ninety-three million dollars. So that's been an increase. And you suggested that, well, I want to know whether it has to do with the increase in allowances for traffic, for food, et cetera. Because there is an increase in spite of the drop in the number of non-refund claimants. Secretary. Well, thank you, Dr. Priscilla Long. Your question is very meticulous. Well, indeed, the Immigration Department has deployed much resources in dealing with these cases. The number of backlogs therefore in twenty seventeen stood at around five thousand nine hundred, as Dr. Long put it. In fact, for these non-refund claimants, there are four stages of their stay in Hong Kong. First of all, how fast the Immigration Department is able to handle the cases? And with, with much effort made by our colleagues, the time has shortened. For the second stage, the appeal stage, we have an appeal board. And, and according to the Immigration Department, after going through the first stage, ninety percent of these claimants would lodge an appeal. So despite clearing the backlogs, sorry, Chairman, let me clarify one point. That means four hundred and eighty-nine million and five hundred and ninety-three million dollars. I mean, it's not, it doesn't include legal aid. It only includes, say, food, daily expenses, transport, et cetera, not legal aid. Well, as long as these non-refund claimants are still in Hong Kong, we need to provide relief for them. That is why before they leave Hong Kong, they will still be eligible for the assistance. Simply put, because they are still here, I need to explain. Because after going through the immigration, the next stage is for them to Because after going through the immigration, the next stage is for them to appeal. And after the appeal, they can still lodge or file a judicial review. And then for the following stage, they're not deported yet because they need to get the relevant passports to be sent back to the countries concerned. So the Immigration Department has really made a great effort. They face really serious challenge. So despite the number of claimants dropping, the expenditure is still on the rise. Like I said, because they believe they come and they would receive one-stop service. Now, I want to know whether you will adopt an across-the-board approach. After handling these backlogs for these new claimants arriving, while we signed the Convention in relation to claim against torture, etc., but I want to know whether you will take the one, you know, across-the-board approach to clear the cases. The long-term goal is that if we're able to process these cases within a certain timeframe, we'll be able to meet the court's requirement that we should only detain them for a reasonable period of time. In the long term, we believe we can achieve this objective, and we're heading this direction. As to when this can be, this target can be met, we are still trying to find an answer. This is my responsibility. Mr. Jeremy Tam. As far as I understand, Hong Kong should not call them refugees or bogus refugees because they are non-refoumen claimants. Is that what you mean, Secretary? I just want to explain to you that the U N Convention on Refugees does not apply to Hong Kong. So in short, the government doesn't use this term. Is that right? Well, if Mr. Tam would like to follow up on this issue, and if you have been following up on this issue, you would know that we have always used the term non-refoumen claims. I'd like to go back to my point in the first round. I agree that there should be a threshold for so-called bogus non-refoumen claimants from overseas in Hong Kong. But my point is, adopting a high threshold doesn't mean you need to make the procedures cumbersome. Because for those meeting the threshold, they might be deterred from applying for arrival because of the cumbersome procedures. So I'm not saying that you should relax the threshold for those on a tourist visa who should come to Hong Kong. I'm just saying that you should review the procedures to make sure that it's not cumbersome. And I just want to make it clear. I'd like to follow up on S B two five seven on government flying services. You can, you give us a table showing their establishment, and I see the problem is quite serious. Because for pilot and air crewman officer, or air crewman officer, there should be fifty-five in the approved establishment. But in twenty seventeen eighteen, the strength stood at forty-two. So perhaps there's a recruitment problem. Pilot, the situation is even more serious. Seventy, the approved establishment is only forty-three in your actual strength. So even if you increase the posts of pilots by two, making it seventy-two, the estimated wage age is two. That means over forty percent of the posts of pilots are not filled. Earlier, the Democrat, the Pan Democrats wrote to the Security Bureau with some suggestions whether a reform would take place to improve their remuneration and the career prospects, so that the problem of vacancies can be dealt with. I haven't received a reply from your bureau, and it's been a month or two since we last wrote to you. So could you please share your thinking with us, Secretary? About the G F S, I'll defer to the director to take your question. Well, in your question, about the pre-arrival registration requirement for Indian nationals, you agree with us in principle, but the procedure should not be cumbersome. I think we need to give a fair chance for the Immigration Department to explain the procedures to you very succinctly. Well, Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to have a reply in writing instead. I'd like to ask about government flying service instead. I'd like to give time for them to take this question. Controller.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mr. Tam for his questions. My department and the Security Bureau have been paying much attention to this issue. We are, we face a big challenge in the recruitment of pilots because the private market is doing quite well. We'll do more in publicizing the attractiveness of our pilot grade. And we'll step up training and do more recruitment so as to fill the vacancies for pilots. In this, in the meantime, we have launched different schemes to recruit pilots with experience in rescue operations as our contract staff. We have been trying to recruit overseas to fill the vacancies. Well, what's, well, this is my question. This is not something that only happened last year. Over the years, you have been suffering from a manpower shortage. It's not a small shortage. It's forty percent of your strength. So given the current terms and employment conditions, you're not able to attract sufficient number of candidates. You cannot just say that I will be friendly, more friendly to the candidates, and you get some to join your G F S. I want to talk about S B oh six six, rewards and allowances. I would say that this is somewhat a no-go area. What are the breakdowns? Is it that you cannot tell us anything about the breakdown? I was, I talked about A B C. Is there anything on A B C? If you don't want to answer the question, say so. I can move on to the next question. You talk about anti-terrorism activities. No one would try to stop you. If you talk about security of the country or security of Hong Kong, I won't ask you questions about how much you are spending on this. Mr. Chen, I think I understand your question. Apart from anti-terrorism work, we are also talking, dealing with serious drug cases, kidnapped, syndicated, organized crimes, and triad-related crimes. They would need to spend money under this hat to ensure that we can tackle these crimes. And we should not, and we must not allow the criminals to know our capability. So this area is still a no-go area. Next, S B two two seven, a C S, a question for C S D. It's a cross-gender person, fifty-nine, nineteen from transgender inmates, nineteen from Philippines, twenty-seven from Thailand. Well, it's done on self, in some countries, they can change the gender shown on the travel document or on the I D if through a self-decoration system. In other countries, even after operation, you cannot change the gender like this. So they are kept in Siam. Are you going to hold them in the solitary confinement to avoid embarrassment? But this is, you know, solitary confinement is a kind of punishment. So what are you going to do to handle these transgender persons? When we deal with inmates coming from overseas, we will look at the I D to decide the gender. But they would also always be interviewed by a doctor. And the doctor would come to a professional judgment through questions and through examination. And these cases will be reviewed by the clinical psychologists. And if the professional judgment is that these are transgender persons, that they would be held in Siam in the transgender unit. And we would provide the services having regard to the individual circumstances. We want to, we put them in the transgender units in order that they will not be harassed. So depending on the number of inmates in the transgender unit, if there's only one or two, they will be staying together. But, but every case is unique. That's my concern. When you put them in the transgender unit, you don't want to avoid the problems if they are mixed with other inmates. But there are different types of transgender persons. If they don't stay, they are not held together. Well, would it be turned among to the subjecting them to solitary confinement? Well, we have different arrangements during daytime and during nighttime. We have to segregate inmates of different genders. If the physical attributes have been changed totally, and the doctor and the psychologist have assessed this to be so, we would place them in that ident, in the facilities for that particular gender. But during nighttime, there would be no need to have total segregation with other inmates. I want to follow up with a question on using civilian cars as roadblocks raised by Mr. James To. I know the notice of intended prosecution is just a routine procedure. A family member of mine was involved in a minor accident some time ago. A statement was taken from my relative, and the gov, and the police officer said, you're okay. Are you going to take legal action against the other party? And my relative said, no, no, I don't want to do that. There would be no need to do that. But afterwards, a notification, a notice of intended prosecution was received. I thought it was computer-generated. I think this also serves as a deterrent. Even though the driver is not in the wrong, the people, he would be more careful next time when driving. And now they said that the gov, the police is not very, is not sensitive enough. Maybe next time you can do a better job. Can I get a response from the Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Mo. After a traffic incident, we issued notices of intended prosecution. At this time, we failed to have regard to the feelings of the parties concerned, and we are very sorry. And we have a review committee working on things such as the guideline, the training to be provided on how to intercept speeding cars. And in this review, we will also cover the procedure regulating the send issuance of a notice of intended prosecution. Talking about the case involving my relative, which I know. But actually, the relative of mine was informed that there was no problem with, on his part, and whether he would like to sue the other party. And yet, the notice was sent to him all the same. Do you need to review this procedure? Well, that's the usual practice. And we have a reason to do this. If an investigation into a car accident cannot be completed within fourteen days, and although in the case that you've talked about, the officer said there was no problem, but there was such a preliminary conclusion. But what about on the fifteenth day, there's a YouTube clip telling a different story, and that might change everything. So if we fail to issue the notice, the letter, and on the fifteenth day, when there's new evidence, there will be no way that I, that we can initiate prosecution. All right, S B oh three seven, one-way permit. You are going to exchange your views with the mainland to ask about the format, the participants, the ranks, and how much expenditure is involved, and you have failed to respond to any of these questions. And you only talk about the mainland authorities, and it's the it's a duty with regard to the issuance of a one-way permit. It's the mainland authorities doing this. But it's not in Article twenty-two. It only says about the entry of mainland, mainlanders to Hong Kong would require approval, but it doesn't say who's empowered to authorize that. So if we take back the power to process one-way permits, we don't even need to amend the basic law. So why, why do you provide an answer like this? Ms. Mo, Article twenty-two talks about for entry into the Hong Kong S A R, people from other parts of China must apply for approval. Among them, the number of persons who enter the region for the purpose of settlement shall be determined by competent authorities of the C P G after consulting the government of the region. So the applicants will be given a permit. A permit for proceeding to Hong Kong and Macau. The, it's granted by mainland authorities, and the new arrival can only come on the string of the one-way permit. But they can apply to Hong Kong first. Time's up. It's my turn. I wanted to ask questions, some questions about S B one six one, West Kowloon Station of X R L Staff Committee. And we're talking about the colocation arrangement. The train compartment is regarded as mainland, but when you get onto the tracks, it's Hong Kong. There may be criminals involved in serious crimes. And they, they may complain about torture and so on and so forth if they are dealt with by mainland authorities. But if they are involved in, say, a fight or arson, and the train may not be able to go back to the West Kowloon Station, you may be forced to open the doors. And then when they leave the train compartment and set foot on the ground on the tracks, it's Hong Kong already. And then an application for refoumen will be submitted, and you have to handle the case. I hope that there wouldn't be many such cases, but you have to consider the manpower. Is it that as long as that person has walked onto the track, then all the usual and procedures will follow? Is that the only way to do, to handle this case? And if that's an arrangement agreed by the public security authorities of the country, it seems that they are shouldering a lot of risks here. I think. the colocation arrangement is offered because they want to do whatever that would help Hong Kong. But they will have to look into how they can ensure security, and that there's a high price they need to pay.
So I'm grateful for the effort to make sure that no security risks will arise, no security risk will be brought into Hong Kong. But regardless of the circumstances, Chairman, if a train stops in the middle of a tunnel, and if a passenger leaves the train compartment or by any means go onto the track, then indeed, the passenger will be coming in from a mainland port area to Hong Kong port area. So in terms of the West Kowloon Station, we do attach great importance to security measures. We need to make sure that the express rail link will be a convenient mode of transport for the public with little security risk. Comparing to the situation of an illegal immigrants coming to Hong Kong by different ways, such as climbing a mountain or taking a ferry, this, taking a speedboat, this could also happen. I, we just need to make sure that it's not a glaring loophole. And like I, like Mr. Tian said, we do have a plan to minimize the risk. On a systemic level, we prevent it from happening. And third point, you made a very valid point in terms of manpower and our manpower plan and deployment, we need to hold drills. And we have given the very careful thought about the security details. Well, but what Chairman mentioned, this scenario could very well happen in other BCPs. Say in Law Wu, if somebody passes the surveillance of the mainland officials of the BCP and rush into Hong Kong border, well, this could also happen. We cannot deny such risk, but we do have relevant measures to tackle the issue. We have not come across any such case that warrants our alarm, but we do have a mechanism. Well, but I'm saying, if it happens, and if this person then claims non-refoulement, you, he must be dealt with by way of the non-refoulement claim mechanism. Well, it will be, he will be dealt with according to the laws in Hong Kong. Next, Dr. Zheng Sheng Tai. Not here, Mrs. Chiu Ka Chen.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is very simple. Just now I asked questions on zero four one, but there wasn't time for the administration to respond to my question about the research reports under BDRS Fund. I want to know whether they are available and the, and why is it that there are so few projects approved under BDRS Fund? Is it because of the high application threshold? And also about day camp, carnivals, and concerts, variety shows, these large-scale programs, I want to know how you gauge their effectiveness and whether there is imbalance in terms of the services provided to rehabilitation service. Finally, is there a mechanism to regularize certain projects so that frontline workers do not need to spend efforts and resources on applying for funding again and again? I'd like the Security Bureau and the and the, it'd be just fun to take my question. Well, first about the reply zero number zero four one, whether the BDF's report should be published regarding the projects approved in twenty fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, et cetera. The research projects have not yet been concluded because a day, a research may take three or four years for data collection, analysis, compilation of report, et cetera. Even for drug rehabilitation treatment, such publicity program may take three years. Well, regarding the funded research projects in twenty fourteen, fifteen, all the way to twenty seventeen, within this year, the, the red, the report should be ready and the report will be available on our website. As for the research reports twenty sixteen, seventeen, the majority of these projects will be completed in twenty nineteen, and again, once completed, the research reports will be available on our website. Regarding the number of projects under BDF. Well, regarding the general funding scheme in the recent two years, in twenty sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen. We see the increase in the number of projects in twenty seventeen, eighteen comparing to twenty sixteen, seventeen. We received ninety-six projects, up by thirty-three percent comparing to the previous year. As for the funding approved, in twenty seventeen eighteen, we approved one hundred and fifty-three million dollars, up by twenty-six percent comparing to twenty sixteen, seventeen. For drug rehabilitation and treatment, this theme accounted for over sixty percent of the total projects approved. In twenty sixteen, seventeen, it accounted for seventy percent of, over seventy percent of the total sum. And also, the, that's also the case in twenty seventeen, eighteen. For drug rehabilitation treatment, all this multi-model, the funding approved exceeded one hundred and eighteen million dollars. So we do not just deploy funding on prevention, public education. As for gauging their effectiveness, the project proponents, when submitting their application, will need to specify their, their project objectives and how these objectives or targets can be met. So in terms of prevention, very often, the project proponents will gauge the effectiveness by gauging the awareness of participants before and after the program. As for the application procedures, we understand that in terms of the application procedures, funding mechanism, the sector is probably not very clear about these matters. Over the past few years, therefore, we have been holding briefing sessions and experience sharing sessions, and we have also heated the views of the sector in implementing improvement measures. For example, each organization can now apply for five projects instead of three with a funding cap of twenty-five million dollars instead of fifteen million dollars. And we've also improved the funding arrangement. Will there be a comprehensive review of the BDF? Well, Mr. Xu just now asked whether the resources will be regularized. Well, that depends on the effectiveness of individual projects and we'll discuss with the organizers. Secretary and Police Commissioner, I think that apart from myself, there are also other members here who would agree that we should improve police relations with the public. We should not be confrontational. However, if there are so many things you're not willing to disclose to members when answering members' questions, including things that you used to tell us in the past, I don't think it would work. And may I digress. When I am the convener of the Civ Civic Frontier, I asked to meet with you, and you just refused, despite the fact that this could improve police relations with the public. And now I'm here as a member, and just now, when answering Mr. Ray Chan's question, you didn't even tell us facts. I'm still going after zero six six about rewards and special services. Well, it's mostly used on combating terrorism, security matters, et cetera. However, it also includes political gatherings, assemblies, demonstrations, rallies. It all, it also comes under this head. Well, I was also involved in rallies, and my phone is, was under your surveillance, because every time we talked about a rally, before we issued a press release, somebody from your branch would ring me and ask whether I would apply for a notice of no objection. That means you have gathered intelligence long, away in advance of anything released in the public domain. So I'd like to reiterate, first of all, about bounty. In the past, you disclose information about the bounty and about the internal procurement procedure within the government. Sometimes the information is also in the public domain. And even if I'm a criminal element in the mainland from the Gazette, I would know that on the third of February, I, you bought some telecommunications equipment, and then you also bought some rounds of ammunition. This information is in the public domain. I'm not forcing you to disclose anything that would undermine your enforcement operations. Well, even if you disclose information about the purchase of bottled water and Mills Barrier, it would not really hinder your enforcement operation. We hope that these details can be disclosed, because it is such a substantial increase, and how can you be accountable to the public? Over the past fourteen years, according to your reply to Mr. Ray Chan, the figure stood at some eighty million dollars. In the past, it was, I mean, in twenty oh five, oh six, it was just sixty million dollars. And that's for rewards and special services. For special materials and supplies, it's gone up by two hundred million dollars. You talked about the three kinds of equipment, arms and ammunition, protective gear, and also gear for gathering evidence. So I think this is just a reasonable request. I hope you consider it. Finally, I really hope we can break new ground. Well, after the Mong Kok conflict between the police and the public, you set up a major incident unit, you conduct research on the police equipment and the handling of incidents. If necessary, you also draw reference from other jurisdictions. I'd like to know the progress of this unit, whether there is any report available for our perusal, and whether any media reports are substantiated. Secretary, first of all, I'd like to clarify that you talked about speculations in the media on the use of rewards and special services. I'm afraid I am not in a position to disclose too much. So even if you have made, you have made a wrong remark, I cannot correct you. But at the same time, I have this responsibility of ensuring law and order and security in Hong Kong, and that it should not be affected. Well, as you examine the budget, we'll try our best to cooperate with you, but I simply cannot compromise the, the security of Hong Kong for the sake of pleasing certain members. Mr. Ben Chan. I just came in, and I heard what Mr. Alakim said. I we're not having a debate here, but every time Civil Human Rights Front organize a rally, definitely, they would need to apply for a notice of no objection. The police doesn't need to tap your phone. This is something really regular. So I'd like to follow up on SB one seven two, on non-refoulement claims. I understand other members already asked questions in the area. According to the figures cited by the department this year, as of February, I mean, between February and January and February, we intercepted two hundred and seven claimants. I understand that the Security Bureau and the Immigration Department have made quite some effort. We also have joined operations with the mainland. At the same time, we see some five hundred, five thousand pending claims. How many years have these cases been dragged on? Will the government impose a deadline for these pending claims? Such that if these claims are not handled by a certain date, the claimants will be repatriated. And recently, we have a number of head-bashing cases in Yunnan, and we suspect that this is a doing of bogus refugees. There have been frequent media reports as well. I hope that the, I want to know whether the government will step up its efforts in this regard. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for your appreciation of our work in reducing the number of claims.
The Immigration Department has been working under a lot of stress, and they have overcome difficulties, know that we can snuggle and see that a positive trend in the number of claims pending. As for the, with the fact that there are people trying to lengthen the time taken for processing these claims, we are seriously considered on setting different time limits. The Chairman has referred to some overseas practice on the time limit to lay, to file claim, the submission of forms and documents, and the time taken from some application to hearing, and also the time to lodge an appeal. I'm also concerned about the security risks referred to by the member, because they would give rise to the law and order problems and community problems. We have heard views from people in the community, and we have, we are aware of the press reports. The police, as I've said, has set up a dedicated team under the OCTB to handle these cases and to strengthen the gathering of intelligence. Intelligence is important. Last year, we arrested about fifteen hundred such claimants. Some are repeated offenders. How can we gather intelligence so that to some extent we can monitor them? And so that, so as to reduce the risk of security, we are working on this. And the district commanders of different police districts are paying attention to the law and order situation in their districts so that they can deploy more officers to patrol and to inform the public about the risk. And we will also detain more such claimants in appropriate cases so as to reduce the risk. Because of the judicial processes involve the time taken for the most difficult cases can be years, but now things are much expedited. And the average time, processing time, has been reduced from twenty-five weeks to fifteen weeks, I think, to ten weeks. I thank the Immigration Department for their efforts. I think you should set a time, set time limits. The claimant has to submit the information to facilitate the processing. They cannot certainly say that they cannot provide the information required, or they want to do it in another language. This is a deliberate attempt to This is a deliberate attempt to delay things. And the community as a whole has to bear the huge cost.
Dr. Fernando Zhang, I want to talk about the inmates. I haven't got an answer on the on the sign language service. S P two, three, six, I want to talk about the wages for inmates. It's forty-six to one hundred ninety-nine per week. It's reported that Mr. Don Lo Zhang was sentenced to twenty months imprisonment and he received two hundred and forty dollars a week. And he is allowed to use the money to buy the toilet tissue, paper and snacks. We're concerned about the pay of inmates. Because we hope when they're discharged, they have some money to sustain themselves. If they only have only have a few hundred dollars and it would be difficult to get accommodation upon discharge. I know that through NGOs that they would be able to get sixty dollars every three days. So this is just barely enough for food. And you have to be very careful about spending the sixty dollars, even if it's just on food. So can you review the level of earnings for inmates? So that when they're discharged, they have will have access to reasonable living living savings. I hope the correctional service and rehabilitation service will be offered. Don't don't say that because they're inmates, we are not really going to offer them the earnings. First of all, about S P two, three, eight, that is inmates with hearings, impairment. And the question is whether sign language interpretation services is provided. As we have set out in the reply, we have referred to the register of part-time sign language interpreters maintained by the judiciary. And we can hire interpreters who are on the list to help us with different cases involving the inmates in need. As we have set out in the reply, we have set out the number of times and expenditure and the number of times that we have used the service. So let me confirm once again that sign language interpretation services are available. And we have set out the number of times, the number of cases that we have offered sign language interpretation in the past five years. On the question of earnings for inmates, there's no employer-employee relationship between my department and the inmates. Although you may call it wages or earnings, it's not actually a pay. According to the law, they have to work for six to ten hours every day because we want them to lead a normal life and also they know how to conduct themselves and and have a regular day-to-day routine. And if necessary, vocational training is provided. And this is on a offer on a voluntary basis a few months or up to two years before discharge. Hong Kong is a developed economy. We attach importance to both correctional aspect and rehabilitations and we provide education service to young people. Let's confide ourselves to earnings. I say, upon discharge, if they only have a few hundred dollars to go by and they have to face a lot of difficulties, what kind of options are offered to them? He may not be able to find a job in good time and he may go astray again. So if the earnings are reasonable, you can do you can help them not to offend again. Can you review the levels of earnings? There's no time. The question is, are you going to review the earnings offered? But this is done annually, right? Ms. Priscilla Leng, you're the last one to go. In replying in replying to my previous question, you said you have a long-term arrangement to improve the system. Let me tell you that the most offensive aspect is that we allow these non-refoulement claimants to work. It is not surprising that people reacted in this way. And some of them are even taken advantage by criminals to commit crimes in the community. You say that you are going to do something in the long term, you are not adequately addressing public concerns. You are going to provide more resources. If the resources are devoted to legal assistance so as to reduce the number of claims, then that's understandable. As suggested previously, I think you should hire more lawyers or experienced lawyers who have been trained to handle such claims. And if for untrained officers, you you will not be able to handle all these cases, even if they work very hard. So can you drastically reduce the time taken to process such claim? Do you have a specific target? Say, within three years, the number would be reduced to reduced to one hundred thousand? So that we can detain them for a reasonable period of time? Then you give people some hope. And I don't think people will be satisfied with a response that you are doing to do something in the long term. So you offer them assistance. And that's also some of the job that we need to do, some of the things that we need to do to resolve these cases. And we can also resolve these cases involving both claimants and the mainland illegal immigrants. Do you have a concrete timetable, the secretary? Or you understand the law very thoroughly? So many of the things that you mentioned are valid in our consideration of the system we can which we put in place. After we can manage to control the time taken for such process, then we will be able to comply with the hard-losing principle in that we can make sure that the detention period is no more than necessary. When can we achieve that? Well, we try to do it as quickly as we can. As I repeatedly said, we must be we must show a recognition to the work of the Immigration Department. At first, the C S D can only handle two thousand cases. Now they can handle five thousand. The number of claims has reduced from five thousand during the peak period to under two thousand last year. If the time taken well, actually, we are looking at eighteen hundred claims every year and it's due on the decline. I believe with the enhanced capacity of C S D, we will soon be able to meet the requirements that we have set for ourselves in terms of processing time. So at a point, we can we'll be confident about the time needed for a case if there's no deliberate delay. And then we are allowed to detain the claimants for a reasonable time so as that processing can be done.
Well, so how whether we can meet the target, of course, it also depends on whether the claiming is deliberately deploying delay tactics. Because according to statistics, it's lower than one percent. The majority of these claimants came for illegal employment. And perhaps if we have time, the Immigration Department can tell you that on a yearly basis, we have two hundred plus cases of illegal employment. And on this basis, we'd like to reduce the number of backlogs, number of cases in the backlog so that we can reach the target of reasonable period of detention. All right, time is almost up. First of all, I need to say this. I thank the Security Bureau Chief and your team. I think your pacing is very good. I hear you loud and clear and you also have taken each and every question. Dr. Priscilla, you're looking at me. I'd like to ask whether the Directive Immigration would like to supplement. Well, we're about to adjourn the meeting, but if you want to, if you have something to add. Well, indeed, for the non-refoulement claims, we have done a lot. And we have cleared the majority of pending claims. We are looking at some four thousand to five thousand pending claims at the moment. And in the coming year, we'll further reduce the number of pending claims. Next year, following the timetable after passage of the Amendment Bill. And when the time is ripe, when everything else is ready, the Secretary will consider implementing the measure to disincentivize them. The next session will begin at two fifteen.